Good morning and welcome to the regular meeting of City Council for Monday, November 13, 2023. Will the Clerk please take the role?
Reverend Burgess.
Here.
Mr. Coghill.
Here.
Ms. Gross.
Here.
Mr. Kraus.
Here.
Mr. Lavelle.
Here.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Here.
Mrs. Warwick.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Here.
Nine members present.
Thank you. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the British Empire, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
May be seated. Thank you. And our next order of business is to amend the agenda. Is there a motion to amend the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Agenda is amended. In accordance with the Home Rule Charter, our first order of business will be Mayor Ed Gany's 2024 Budget Address. Councilman Burgess and Councilman Kraus, will you please escort Mayor Gany into chambers?
Yes, Madam President.
Madam Clerk is checking on the lock on the door. Teresa locked a few people out. Because they have keys. No John, no Ara. Well, the Madam Clerk is checking on something, so let's wait till she comes back in. Is it outside? Where's John? I don't know where John is. Our Sergeant at Arms has a key, so I think they're looking for him, too. Is he coming? He's coming with the key. Councilman Kraus and Councilman Burgess. Is he here? Oh, you're here? Can you open it? It's on our side. I'm sorry. He's going to open this door. Only our Sergeant at Arms have the key.
No problem. She's sorry for things happen. It's called technology. You know, they talking about they sorry. Technology happens. This is what happens when you dealing with technology. Reality is, it's not about technology, it's about us. And I want to thank you for everybody who came down here today. I appreciate you. I appreciate all the work that you put in to help make this a great city. And so before I begin, I just want to say thank you. Council President, I want to thank you for this opportunity to stand here and give my speech. Council, thank you for having me today. Good morning. Thank Council President Kelsmith, Finance Chair Lavelle, and the entire City Council for your time and dedication to serving our great city. In particular, I would like to take this opportunity, as they prepare for their last budget season, to thank Councilman Kraus and Councilman Burgess for their years of leadership and service. I also want to welcome the new Councilmen, Bobby Sherlin and Kohari Mosley, who are here with us today. I look forward to working and serving with you come January. Can we rise and give them an applause, please? Can we rise and give them applause? Councilman Burgess. Councilman Kraus. Thank you for your service. Thank both of you for your service.
Thank you, Mr. Herr.
One year ago, I stood here and I shared with you my assessment of the state of the city of Pittsburgh. I voiced that the state of our city was strong and that I was confident in our ability not just to succeed but to lead the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania and the United States in confronting the challenges coming out of a pandemic. I pledged that we would commit to restoring core city services after years of disinvestment due to Act 47 error. This means more swimming pools, more potholes filled, and better snowplow. That we would become a learning organization committed to solving problems to their root cause through the leadership and wisdom of our residents and our frontline workforce. And that we would make tough decisions rather than play politics. That we would serve the people rather than cater. I'm committed that we would use this approach to governing to achieve three lofty goals. One is to make this the safest city in America. I mean that. We're going to be the safest city in America. Two is to be the most welcoming city. We need to welcome everybody to our beautiful city. And third, that if you call this city home, you have an opportunity to thrive here. We move all barriers and opening them up for everybody. This year, we launched the City and Streets Initiative in order to bring government to neighborhoods that have not had the opportunity to speak to their leaders for far too long. We heard from thousands of our residents about what is most important to them and what keeps them up at night. Today, I am proud to put forward a budget with no tax increase, no cuts to staffing or services, and that responds to these needs and dreams. That is extremely important. And I come before you to say that our city is even stronger than it was a year ago, that we have made important progress on the path to our goals, and that our future is brighter than ever. Today, we are here, thank you. Our work, our work in his budget is about our youth and their future. All that we do today will be able to help improve the ability for them to thrive, not just today but every day. Our greatest investment is our youth. To have a better tomorrow, we have to invest in them now. These young leaders are working with our departments across the city to learn about their local government and how to work towards a future career right here in City Hall. Thanks to our partners that can make this happen with us, Youth and Richmond Services, CCAC, and Partners for Work, these kids are receiving college credits and a stipend for participating in this innovative new program. You are the future leaders of our great city, and everything we do today, you will carry forward for future generations. We should clap for the youth of this region. We do not give them enough of what we need to give them. Creating opportunities for our young people into the future means that we invest in protecting our city-owned infrastructure, especially our bridges. The Department of Mobility and Infrastructure has been able to increase staffing to better manage our bridge inventory. And I am proud to say that after a year-long comprehensive assessment of our needs, we have proposed four new bridge maintenance staffers and a 300% increase in spending on bridge maintenance and repairs compared to previous four years ago. Please, let me say this again, this is important. We have proposed a 300% increase in spending on bridge maintenance and repairs compared to the previous four years. This year, we have seen too many of our residents lose their lives in traffic-related accidents. All these deaths are preventable, and this is why we are committing to a vision of zero traffic-related fatalities so that we can have all the tools we need to keep our residents safe. I'm proud of the work that our DOMI team has done. I am proud of DOMI. I am very proud of DOMI to keep everyone safe, no matter if they walk, roll, or drive to work, school, parks, anywhere. Traffic calming is our residents' most requested service. We're shifting resources to support additional speed bumps, lane reduction, two-way conversions, and other measures to make our streets safe for vehicles, cyclists, and pedestrians. This budget represents an unprecedented, unprecedented 136% increase in traffic calming funding, and we're adding two new positions to help manage these critical projects. You should clap for that. Let me emphasize it for the ones that might not have heard me in the back. This represents an unprecedented 136% increase in traffic calming funding. That's amazing. Improvements in the right-of-ways are not only important investments in safety, they are also opportunities to connect communities that have historically been isolated from blemishes and opportunities. We know about that. With the award of the Competitive Rise Grant, we'll be investing $14 million in the Hill District neighborhood over the next few years to improve and sustain Main Streets and to restore vital connections for residents to transit and downtown. $14 million to the Hill District. And believe because we should always go first. This project, through a unique partnership with the White House, will be the first of many where we apply new tools that make sure that when we build things, our residents can prosper and thrive. We will build a city for all. When we listen to our communities, we are able to do big things that help entire neighborhoods to prosper. Thanks to a partnership with the Manchester Citizens Corporation led by LaShawn Burton Falk, we are able to secure Reconnecting Communities Planning Grant that will allow us to understand how best to restore connectivity to Manchester and provide pathways for residents and businesses to both the riverfront and our way of life in this city. Thank you, MCC. None of these things, none of these achievements would be possible without the hard work of Director Lucas and Director Jeff and the entire DOMI staff. Can we have them stand for a minute, please? My whole DOMI team, stand. When I say that I want to make, when I say that I want to make Pittsburgh the safest city in America, to me, this also means caring for the safety of our city workforce. Over the past year, the Department of Public Works has built out a real-time safety system with the goal of eliminating all safety-related incidents for our public works workforce. We have also established a goal of expanding this system to all city departments by the end of 2023. Since implementing this new system, DPW has seen a 55% reduction in work-related injuries since August of 2022. Y'all should clap for that. This means fewer workers out due to injury and better staff crews to serve our residents. It helps make sure that we are fulfilling our pledge to restore core city services with crews available to pick up the garbage, fill the potholes, clean the lots, and plow the snow. Our DPW crews work to provide clean and safe restrooms in our parks and a new pilot program. This plan resulted in the reopening of over 30 permanent park restrooms across the city during normal park hours. We've done that to make sure that we have places where people can go. We've heard you, and we answer that call. Our Public Works crew are on the front lines to combat litter and blight throughout our city. This year, they have completed 86 clean and leaned on privately-owned lots, an increase from only five the year before. Our anti-litter team, our anti-litter teams are on the front line of illegal dumping enforcement, taking in over 2,100 complaints this year alone. In 2024, we will include funding to continue our resident sidewalk pilot program, which for the first time allows city government to partner with residents to improve the walkability of our critical corridors with a particular focus on the routes our children walk on their way to school. We will also add, we will also add 15 positions to our Bureau of Environmental Service to ensure that our garbage trucks have the staffing levels they need to meet residents' needs for service while providing workers, while preventing workers' injuries, and we will increase investment in our city facilities all over the city. DPW staffs are doing all this while working to eliminate barriers in diversifying their workforce. Last year, more women and minorities were hired into critical leadership positions than ever before. Our city is cleaner, safer, and more welcoming due to the hard work of every single one of our dedicated DPW employees and their leader, Director Horstein. Thank you. Is he here today? Is he here today? In the past year, we have seen a remarkable transformation in our Department of Public Safety, a remarkable transformation. We've made our emergency service bureaus faster, smarter, more capable, and more accountable. We've expanded our capacity to respond to social, behavior, and mental health emergencies with compassion and care. We have installed leaders with the knowledge, the vision, and energy to carry our city forward. And we've opened new chapters of cooperation and collaboration with the unions representing our public safety officers. For the first time in over 20 years, we signed a contract with the Fraternal Order of Police through a voluntary agreement rather than through arbitration. This contract, this contract contains historic investments in rank-and-file salaries to aid in recruitment and retention, and for the first time establishes a disciplinary matrix that makes clear the conduct we expect those responsible for keeping us safe to abide by. This contract will also help us build a police bureau that reflects our community and our values. This is really important. I want to thank the Pittsburgh Bureau of Police. Please give them a hand. We are also increasing investments in new forms of community violence and interruption. Our REACH team has now grown to 30 men and women who work with people exposed to the disease of violence every day to prevent harm before it happens. In addition, this year, we made $1 million in direct investment into community organizations that have proven their effectiveness in addressing harm and trauma, and we intend to double that in 2024. If we are going to have success in having zero homicides in our city, we must do all that we can to ensure those who take a life in our city are brought to justice. Our Major Crimes Unit has worked tirelessly to bring justice to families who have had their relatives and loved ones' lives taken from them due to violence. While we are seeing a year-over-year reduction in homicides, one life lost to violence is too many. This year, Major Crimes, listen, cleared over 80% of homicides committed in our communities. Their work contributes to peace, hope, healing for the people of our city, and I am proud of their accomplishments. I ask, I ask everyone to join me in thanking our officers, our REACH team, and our community organizations for their outstanding work across our city. Please stand and give them a hand. It takes all of us to reduce violence. Moving forward, we will continue to work to implement the Plan for Peace, our public health approach to public safety that meets the needs of and can earn the trust of all in our communities and exemplifies the values of care, guardianship, service that are at the heart of public safety. Through strategic investments and reorganizations in the Office of Community Health and Safety, we are now, we are now living up to the promise it held when it was launched. The Co-Response Program, launched and earnest this year, has seen success in ensuring that the right responders are available to meet the needs of those who are experiencing mental health crisis. Joint teams of social workers and dedicated police officers are dispatched to assist our residents in crisis and are connecting them to the resources they need. In just one three-week window earlier this year, the team successfully prevented three suicides, reversed dozens of overdoses, and returned the number of unhoused residents with their families. Y'all should clap for that. Co-responder work closely, co-responders work closely with our Roots Outreach Team, which in 2024 will expand to services, to serve our entire city. Together, they play a vital role in our work to make downtown and all of our neighborhoods safe and welcoming for everyone. I want to thank you for that. They've worked hand-in-hand with our partners at Allegheny County Department of Human Services to address the most complex challenges affecting our people. This collaboration brings to the table all the necessary agencies needed to share solutions and better serve our residents. Together, we solve problems, not in silos, but together. In 2024, we will continue to build upon these success stories across our public safety services with increased investments, new initiatives, and improved systems. We will add new vehicles to ensure that fire, EMS, and police fleets are adequately prepared to respond to critical incidents and begin the process of, I almost messed it up, making sure that we have, come on. I can't get it out today. Civilianizing our police bureau through the addition of 12 community service aides. Stop right there. I promise you that we will start moving more police into the street and that we will civilianize our police force, and we're doing just that. That's a problem, that's a promise made and a promise kept. These aides will help sure, these aides will help make sure that our officers have the time to focus on building stronger relationships in our communities, and these new investments build upon our work over the past year and will bring us closer to our, will bring us closer to our vision of making Pittsburgh the safest city in America. None of this will work, none of this will work would be possible without the visionary leadership of our Public Safety Director Lee Schmidt or that of our extraordinary Bureau of Chiefs, EMS Chief Amir Gilchrist, Fire Chief Darrell Chong, and Police Chief Larry Scorotto, as well, as well as a special shout-out to Reverend Glenn Grayson and Antoine Riley from our REACH teams. Thank you. Yeah. I also want to, I also want to thank our downtown partnerships, Jerry Waldorf of the Pittsburgh Downtown Partnership, John Valentine with Downtown Neighborhood Alliance, and Stephanie Passchmann and Lauren Conley at the Allegheny Conference. Your commitment to safe welcoming and thriving downtown is appreciating you, and I appreciate you. Our recreation centers are vital community assets, offering enjoyment enrichment to youth and families across our city. By providing safe places for our kids to learn, play, and grow, they are also a key component of our violence prevention work. We need our rec centers. We need our rec centers for our children. Our children should have somewhere safe to go every day, every single day. Our rec centers are being transformed, and over the coming years, you can see, you can expect more investments into these vibrant community centers in our city. This year, we will, this year, we will, this year, we were able to expand ours at Ammons Rec Center and Phillips Rec Center, which resulted in 2,000 visitors from July to September. Kids were able to get meals and engage in safe activities, and soon, families will be able to connect with social workers and other resources in order to make sure that their families is all in one place called our rec centers. Last summer, we were able to provide nearly 90,000 meals to our children and over 20,000 meals to seniors in our healthy, active-living center. That's amazing. This, this summer, we will also be able to open the largest number of pools since the pandemic. Over 125,000 residents took advantage of the 15 out of the 18 pools we opened up this summer. We want to get all our pools open. We're working diligently. The more activity we have in our city, the less it keeps our children off the street and the less it makes them want to go to the park. We're helping them grow up, just not grow old. Park staff connected families across our city to healthy and fresh fruits and vegetables at Revitalized Farmers Market and have worked with City Council, this council, and the Food Policy Council, DAB Gross, to create a $3 million food justice fund. In 2024, we will continue to make improvements to our farmers' market by adding a full-time manager and investing in the City Farm Program to improve access for all of our residents to healthy, fresh, listen, locally grown produce. This is what it means to serve the people, and I am thankful for the leadership of Director Vargas and the entire city park team, Director Rice. As our city grows and changes, we must improve and adapt our system to ensure the safety of our built environment. Our dedicated team at PLI is working hard to improve inspections and permitting services for our residents. They have expanded the accelerated review process for mechanical and electrical permits, helping local helping local businesses move through the permitting process faster than ever before while freeing up reviewers time to review homeowners' permits. These accelerated reviews, along with pre-application review meetings, means less red tape for everyone who needs a permit for their home repair projects or their major development projects. We heard you, we're moving on it. PLI, thank you for making it better. This year, PLI has reevaluated over 1,600 condemned properties, getting through a year-long backlog, a year-long backlog. In 2024, we will continue to build on this progress by improving language access support in the One Stop PGH Platform, adding additional positions to support code enforcement, inspection and application review and reopening our in-person permitting counter, which has been closed since the beginning of the COVID-19 pandemic. This new and state-of-the-art, okay, y'all can do that clap, go ahead clap, 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 clap. Hold it, pause it. All right, give it one more time, come on, one more time. Yeah. Let's go. The new and state-of-the-art facility at 412 Boulevard of the Allies will be the place where continued investment in technology will meet a renewed commitment to customer service that will make the permitting process simpler, faster and even better. Thank you to this team and to the Acting Director David Green for leading these innovative ways to make the city work better for our residents. Y'all should clap for him. Dave, are you here? Are you here? Where's the act? All right, there we go. Give him a hand. One of the major initiatives that we have undertaken since coming into office was focusing on removing silos and working to create better and more efficient interdepartmental cooperation. An example of this is the work our Department of City Planning permits and licenses and inspections and mobility and infrastructure are doing to modernize and streamline the city's online permit application portal. Soon, we will be unveiling a new, we will be unveiling a new online interface that will incorporate modern website design and increased functionality on tablets and phones. Working with this council, City Planning has established new zoning code provisions to reduce costs and time for HVAC replacements as well as the recently proposed code revisions that will reduce barriers that create undue burden for small childcare businesses. While so much of our work focuses on the issues immediately in front of us, planning is the department that is working towards a better day for the city of Pittsburgh. Our fan, our one, one fantastic example is our Cityland Consortium to purchase renewable wind energy, which will soon provide 40% of energy consumption in city facilities. I think we should clap for that, Eric. I know you big on that. Let's give Erica a hand. And through putting federal dollars to work to repair communities that have been separated by poor urban plans of the past, their focus on sustainability, renewal and a dedication to ensuring that the city of 20 years from now is one in which every Pittsburgher can thrive lies at the core of their work on our comprehensive plan, which will begin in earnest soon. We will deliver on the promise to have a comprehensive plan. This work is essential to establish, establishing a clear vision for the future of our city while accounting for the injustice of our past. These two objectives will be united through a comprehensive plan that takes us, that takes as its foundation a just transition approach to create economic, social, environmental justice and equity in all of our city. In addition to launching the competitive, the comprehensive plan in 2024, we will be adding additional positions to City Planning's zoning and development review team to expedite planning reviews. This will allow us to protect public interest, encourage positive economic development and ensure more efficient review process for all city property owners. Director Abrams and her team have done an remarkable job to work to ensure that Pittsburgh continues to be a resilient, well into the future city that is ready for all challenges. Ladies and gentlemen, give it up for Karen Abrams. When I ran for office, I pledged that I would do the work necessary to make sure that everybody pays their fair share. This year, our law and finance departments moved forward to challenge the tax-exempt status of 26 properties that didn't pass the test of being a purely public charity. These challenges are already beginning to result, result in property owners paying property taxes and we won't stop until everyone who should be is paying their fair share to our great city. Thank you. Thank you, City Solicitor Chris Shakubiac, Finance Director Jen Gula and everyone in their office for their work in holding property owners accountable to the Pennsylvania Constitution. Thank you for your work. I appreciate it. Moving properties onto the tax roll also means responsibility stewarding our vacant, abandoned and tax-derlinged properties. This year, our finance department has completed public sales of 96 city-owned properties with an additional 101 sales pending. This is nearly twice as many as in 2022. And thanks to the action this council took to amend the cooperation agreement between the city, the URA and the Pittsburgh Land Bank, we are in a better position than ever to finally leverage this tool to reduce blight in our communities and make, and more effectively facilitate neighborhood-scale development. As evidence of this, just last month, the URA conveyed 17 properties to the land bank that will be used for community gardens, urban, urban agriculture and affordable housing. We look forward to working with this council and the other taxing bodies to further unlock the potential of the land bank and deliver on its promises. Our finance department is the engine that keeps all of our city services running and and our city could not function without them. Please join me in thanking Director Gula and her team for reducing backlogs for real estate taxes and building more robust systems to keep our city moving. Thank you. Y'all should give her a hand. Our city also couldn't function without the dedicated team and innovation and performance. IMP is more than just computers and software. They are the team that keeps critical city functions operating and creates transparency in local government through the analysis and sharing of government information. They are helping lead our transformation into a learning culture and have been critical in our success in implementing the new DPW Real-Time Safety System. They have helped local startups solve problems our departments face through PGH Lab. For the first time in the program's history, we will create a first customer program to better support these companies and deepen the city's commitment to civic innovation. In 20, in 2024, IMP will continue to lead efforts to create a more modern, accessible city government by investing in necessary data functions, including cybersecurity, establishing unirruptible power supplies to secure continual public safety functions during power outages and modernize public works and public safety telecommunications. I am extremely proud of the work our city is doing in the area of digital equity. Alongside the county, we are anchoring a remarkable alliance of government, university, public schools and nonprofits that are acting together to bring affordable and fast digital access to every resident in this city. The Pittsburgh Digital Equity Coalition has created a strategic plan to bring broadband devices and training to ensure a vibrant future for our region and its inhabitants. Thank you, Director Norman, and the team that you have for your continued collaboration and innovation that makes this city work for all. Thank you. Over the, over the past year, we have been focused on opening doors and removing barriers to careers here at City Hall. Our dedicated human resource team has been a key strategic partner in finding ways to bring opportunities to residents to good jobs here right in our city. In partnership with Pittsburgh Public Schools and Pathways to Prosperity, we have made a historic investment in paid internships and co-ops for young people to train them in good-paying union jobs in the skilled trades. From eliminating driver's license requirements for crossing guards to change how our police recruits earn their credits, HR has been leading to help make every job more accessible in this city. Thank you to the Education Coordinator Alexis Walker and Director Paula Kellerman and her team for helping put more Pittsburghers to work. We appreciate you. And a special thanks, and a special thank you to Carpentry Foreman John Nita Bala, did I get that right, for going above and beyond to ensure that this program is successful for all of our youth. Thank you for what you do for our youth. Thank you what you do for the future. We are here today because of the hard work of our Office of Management and Budget. Can I ask Deputy Mayor Jake and Operating Chief Lisa, Economic Development Officer Cal, Financial Officer Patrick to please stand along with the operating and capital teams? Thank you for doing the hard work of translating my vision for our city into a budget that invests in our priorities and lifts up our values. I thank you for taking a vision and making it real. OMB also includes the grants team, which this year has led work to secure over $33 million in grant funding for projects for our parks, reconnecting our communities, violence intervention and fix, and fixing our city roads and bridges. It also includes our procurement team, which working together with the Office of Business Diversity has also begun to reimagine how we do procurement of contracts in our city. Our city has created a new pre-bid meeting process with better and more dedicated outreach. This work is already seeing success. Before this new policy, the city had an average of five contractors attend pre-bid meetings and now we have over 20 companies are there right now to learn about our procurement process. That is growth and advancement. We have also worked to break up large contracts to provide more opportunities for our local businesses to get involved with city work. This includes the construction work on Homewood Field, which has a minority prime contractor, six MWDBE subcontractors. These innovative processes have meant increased opportunities for our local MWDBE companies and as a result, we have seen subcontract for our large primes to MWDBE companies more than double. Thank you to Chief of Staff Jake Wheatley, to Deputy Chief of Staff Felicity Williams, to Chief Procurement Officer Jen Oldsinger and Business Management and Business Diversity Manager Chuck Thorne and their teams for your work in expanding opportunities for our diverse businesses. Thank you. Thank you. If we're not diverse, we don't grow. If opportunity is not here, we don't grow. No one should have to leave our city to find, to be able to thrive. They should be able to thrive right here. Building strategic, building strategic partnerships allows us to find ways to create a brighter future for our children. This summer, through the Office of Financial Empowerment, our Learn and Earn Summer Youth Program helped 125 young people open their first checking accounts. Thank you to the partners at Dollar Bank who collaborated with us to open non-custodial accounts, contributing $50 to each child to help them on their way. Thanks to Jason Jones, my guy at Dollar Bank, Financial Empowerment Manager Sharon Watkins for helping to build lasting partnership for kids and families in our city. Thank you. Thank you. Pittsburgh is a national leader in workforce development and I'm honored that our great city was named one of just five workforce hubs by President Biden. Thank you, President. Just last week, we had over 47 local labor unions, businesses, foundations, nonprofits and elected officials sign onto our Pittsburgh Good Jobs Principles, our roadmap to ensuring that everyone who calls our city home can have a good, family-sustaining job. This new program will allow us to track and measure our success while we create over 1,000 good jobs right here in our city. Thank you to Workforce and Youth Manager Rick Williams, our, our union partners Darren Kelly, Darren Kelly and Steve Mazza and Partners for Work for all that you contribute to making this happen. Your efforts is why this occurred and I want you to know I'm very appreciative. Last year, my office undertook a reorganization of government to make it work better for you. We transitioned the 311 response line into the Office of Neighborhood Service to best serve the people. Through this work, our team has been able to implement new systems, improvements that have increased our productivity in resolving service requests by 300%. This dedicated team launched a door-to-door canvassing program to better inform residents about projects happening in their neighborhood. This year, they have knocked on over 10,000 doors to help residents know about projects, meetings and events happening in their neighborhoods. That's remarkable. They embody the spirit of bringing government to the people. And this year, we launched our City in the Street Initiative where thousands of residents were able to meet directly and conveniently with city officials to learn about how to get a job, public safety, housing permits and services to support themselves and their families. Thank you to Rebecca Rinaldo, Neighborhood Service Senior Manager and the entire Neighborhood Service Team for helping bring the government to the people. Is she here? Rebecca. Thank you. Thank you. The city of Pittsburgh, for years, has had numerous policies in place meant to protect civil rights and workers' rights, but never had a team in place to do the work to put these policies into practice. Earlier this year, my administration launched the Office of Equal Protection under the leadership of Zeke, my guy. This team works to protect our residents with disabilities, ensure our workers have access to their pay, sick, leave rights and are on the front lines of our work to end gun violence in our city. Y'all should clap for that. Making Pittsburgh welcome for everyone includes those who are relocating to our city as refugees and immigrants. This year, our Office of Immigrants and Refugees Affairs have worked hard to provide language access to make Grand Street inclusive and welcoming. That's major. Staff and residents joined hands to create our first-ever International Day Parade where over 30 nationalities came together in peace and unity to celebrate the diversity that makes us a great city. We want to thank our Acting Manager Michelle King and want to acknowledge the work of Fay. Fay, we appreciate you so much. They have done a lot to make Pittsburgh more welcoming for everyone who calls our city home. Thank you so much for that. Appreciate it. Having a place to call home, nothing is more vital to our ability to feel safe and welcome in all of our communities or critical for us to thrive. That is why I'm so thankful to this council for working with us to increase resources for affordable housing and proud of the work our team is doing with the URA to close on the first affordable housing bond in Pittsburgh's history. Can I stop there? We implemented it. And I think it's only right that I thank Cal and them for doing the job of this bond. Councilman Burgess, it's your idea. You talked to me about this like five, seven years ago. And I want to say thank you for playing that scene. These news, these new resources will further supplement those the URA received from the Housing Opportunity Fund and other city fundings from federal recovery funds to respond to the housing crisis our residents face. However, even before we received the bond proceeds, the URA has invested $11.3 million to preserve and create 408 affordable housing units over the first three quarters of this year. Over that same period, they have also been able to support 89 new homeowners and assist 200 renters to stay in their homes. All these borrowers are low to moderate income and over 81% identify as women or minorities. We should clap for that. Our partners at the URA and the Housing Authority are also committed to bringing new federal and state resources to bear for investments in all of our neighborhoods. You can see this in our six low-income housing tax credit, tax credits awards. More than we have ever received before are the recent announcement of $15 million in PHFA Housing Option Grant Awards. That's amazing. That's amazing. That shows what teamwork can do. It's not about an individual, it's about all of us. Not to mention the $50 million Choice Neighborhood Implementation Grant awarded for Bedford dwellings in the Hill District. 50 million. Y'all, yeah, 50 million. Y'all, yeah, 50 million. Small, local businesses are crucial to the fabric of our neighborhoods and represent a path to financial independence for so many. To support that dream and invest in our communities, the U R A has invested $5.82 million in 70 small businesses over the first nine months of this year, and of those businesses, 77% are minority or women-owned firms. That's amazing. Thank you to the Executive Director, Shushila, everyone at the U R A for your partnership with us on expanding affordable housing, increasing opportunities for businesses to thrive. Without your dedication and hard work, I couldn't speak about it today. U R A, thank you. Our recent successes, ongoing initiatives, and plans for the coming year make me more confident than ever in the potential of our city, but that future is not without its challenges. While the state of our finance remains strong, and the net remains strong, we know that we have some weaknesses in the national economy, lingering debt from Act 47 here, and the expiration of our federal pandemic support at the end of 2024 will require us to be especially frugal, particularly in our capital spending until the end of 2026, when the retirement of significant legacy debt will dramatically improve our financial position. My administration has chosen to turn this challenge into an opportunity and retool our capital plan to focus on project delivery over the next three years. We have dozens of important capital projects underway, already financed, and in most cases, month if not years behind schedule. This backlog grew over the past decade as the very real urgency of reinvestment in our facilities and infrastructure ran into the weak state of our project delivery capabilities after years of cuts and deferred investment in our staffs and systems. Next year, we will embark on a focused sprint on completing these projects we have underway before adding additional projects to our capital plan. Stop for a minute. It makes no sense to keep adding projects when we haven't even got that done. It just don't make no sense. This makes sense. This is why I have decided to propose a capital budget that does not include any brand new projects in 2024, but instead focusing on filling funding gaps in existing projects to put them on a path to successful and more timely completion. While we must be more thoughtful in our capital spending, we also must tackle the most urgent priorities in our infrastructure to meet our commitments to the safety of our residents and our workforce. That is why I'm proud, even in constrained circumstances, to propose that increase in bridge maintenance and traffic calming that I mentioned earlier is so important. Our neighborhoods have waited too long for these vital bread-and-butter investments, and I am committed to delivering them. We started and we won't stop. Keeping our residents informed about the work of our administration in an open, honest, and transparent fashion is key to building trust with communities that have never seen themselves reflected in city hall. Thank you to my hard-working communications staff, directed by Maria. Maria, stand up, for your work on informing our community. Last year, we only had one person in communications to deal with KDKA, WTA, WPXI, and everybody else. One, I can guarantee you, if you know anything about communications, and I take your staff and only give you one, there won't be a success rate. I want y'all to give Maria extending ovation. The state of our city is strong, our future is bright, and our potential is limitless. I am honored and humbled to have the opportunity to serve the citizens of Pittsburgh as mayor. And though the path may not be straight, and the going may be difficult at times, I believe with every fiber of my being that we will reach new heights. I look forward to another year of the challenging but necessary and rewarding work of leading our city through tough times, but always towards a more just, humane, and prosperous tomorrow. That new day can only come through collaboration. That new day, let me say it again, can only come through collaboration, partnership, and a common purpose. I thank you all for joining me in this journey. Coming into, I've always told people that we've had a lot of mayors in the city, but very few that had the lead coming out of a pandemic, and it's the greatest challenge that one can have, if you like, challenges. And I told my team that every day, focus on falling in love with adversity so that we can work and build the partnerships to make this the best city in America, and I am proud of my team. I am proud. This is what we've done in less than two years. This is what we've done in less than two years. I will put this record up against any administration. This team go get it every single day. Status quo don't grow, productivity does, and every day we come to work, we gotta go get it. We don't have time to wait around. We must make this city best for the next generation. That doesn't just take this administration, it takes all of us. Together, we grow this city. Silos don't move, cooperations do, and the more that we cooperate, the more that we build an infrastructure that we can get things done, making it safe, welcoming, thriving, the best city in America will occur called Pittsburgh. God bless you.
Thank you, Mayor Ganyan team. Council's budget hearings will begin this Wednesday, November 15th, at 10:00 a.m. We are going to take a recess. Can I have a motion to recess?
Sure. Motion to recess, Madam President.
Second.
Oh, in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good morning, and welcome back to the city council's resumed regular meeting. Following Mayor Gany's budget address, we will now move on to public comment, I believe.
No, you have a proclamation.
Oh, no, we have proclamations, but no proclamations. I have one to be read into the record. Madam Clerk.
Council President Smith presents, be it further resolved, that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Sunday, November 12th, 2023 to be Tom Cusick Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
Motion to approve.
And second?
Second.
Any discussion? Oh, in favor?
Aye.
Proclamation is approved. Thank you. And now we'll move on to our public comment, and we'll go on with our first public commenter is Naomi Mullin. First registered speaker is Naomi Mullin. Naomi, is she online? She's not online, I knew she's not in the audience, I know her. Andrew Breik. Andrew? B R Y K. No? He is online? Okay. Andrew?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you for joining us.
Hi, and thanks so much for adding me.
Please state your name.
Go ahead, if that's okay?
Yes, please state your name and neighborhood for the record, and then you'll have three minutes.
My name is Andrew Breik, and I live in Friendship.
Continue.
Okay, good morning. Thanks to the council for the opportunity to comment today, and also I wanted to thank Kim Baskin-Clark, the City Clerk's Office, for helping me fill out the forms, because I was having some trouble with that. Like I said, my name is Andrew Breik, I live in Friendship with my wife Emily and our son Benji, and I just wanted to comment on recent decision taken by Zoning Board of Adjustment to deny variance for the Sure Safe site in Bloomfield. I'm in that part of town a lot. I was pretty enthusiastic about seeing that lot redeveloped. The project had a lot of features that I think are really important for the city. It was a mixed-income project that met inclusionary zoning guidelines with 25% affordable units. It was a mixed-use project that preserved the grocery store that was on the site originally, and it was right on, I believe, the 86 bus route, and also had a lot of community support, and I believe members of council also spoke in favor of the project. But it couldn't be built because of, couldn't get the variances required essentially to build that project, and it's kind of unfortunate. You know, I live pretty close to the Glass Center on Penn Avenue, and when I walk out on a pin, I see, you know, a big bank, a drive-through bank going up, and it's, you know, our zoning code lets big corporations like Chase Bank make these planet-cooking drive-through sites, but we can't build places for people to live and buy groceries, and I think unfortunately we have our priorities backwards. We have an urgent global climate crisis, an urgent national housing crisis, and in Pittsburgh, we have an urgent local crisis of transit sustainability, and at the root of all these problems is housing and housing policy. And I understand the Z B A has to follow the rules, and that's why I'm asking council today to look at our zoning code and follow our neighbors Cleveland, Minneapolis, Milwaukee, all of which have opened up their zoning code in the last decade. It's a hard problem to solve as a resident. It's much easier for me to say, please fix this, than it is for leaders to do it, but it is important, and I'm asking you, for my family, for my kids' future, to make our city greener, more walkable, more affordable, and not leave anybody behind. So, thanks for the opportunity to speak today, and I hope everybody has a great weekend.
Thank you. And our next registered speaker is Christopher Beam.
My name is Christopher Beam, I'm a resident of Bloomfield. Esteemed members of City Council, thank you for the opportunity to speak before you today. I'm a member of Pro-Housing Pittsburgh, a grassroots organization of Pittsburgh renters and homeowners who are alarmed at the worsening housing crisis and who advocate for abundant affordable housing throughout the Pittsburgh region. I am here to implore all of you on City Council to reform our broken zoning ordinances, to legalize building abundant housing. The severity of the problem was demonstrated by several recent Zoning Board of Adjustment decisions that have delayed and prevented hundreds of both affordable and market-rate homes from being built in Pittsburgh, which drives up the cost of many more. After decades of decline, the population of Pittsburgh has finally stabilized in the latest census, meaning that we are at a critical juncture in Pittsburgh history. The city's zoning codes, originally crafted in 1923 to protect residents against polluting industries, have evolved into stifling regulations, impeding housing development by mandating excessive parking minimums, segregated housing types, and discouraging people from making investments to improve existing homes or to downsize in place. With rents skyrocketing over the past couple of years and the cost of building new housing increasing with surging interest rates, the city should not further drive up the costs by forcing expensive, single-family homes onto every family that needs a place to live. The Echo Realty project in Bloomfield, rejected last week by the Z B A, exemplifies the consequences. Despite efforts to include 25 affordable units, the rejection, based on residential compatibility standards, perpetuates the housing crisis, forcing lower-income residents to distant suburbs just because we have a ridiculous limit of three-story buildings along our neighborhood main streets within urban Pittsburgh. As a new board member of the Bloomfield Development Corporation, it was amazing to be able to participate and help facilitate the development activity meeting for the Echo project. I heard from my neighbors who attended the meetings how excited a lot of them were about the improvements that would come to the useless parking lot that exists today and the preservation of the grocery store. The affordable units that were championed by Councilwoman Gross and her inclusionary zoning overlay are now in limbo with the rest of the project. Rejecting dense residential projects like this will only worsen the housing crisis, driving housing prices up, as the people who can afford to stay will, but it will push lower-income residents farther away from our city. I can think of several people who attended my church who have recently needed to move to places like Bellevue or Churchill to find housing that they can afford, much further away from transit, grocery stores, schools, and restaurants. We are in a housing crisis today, and we demand immediate action to legalize building abundant housing here in Pittsburgh. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Our next registered speaker is Armin Sami. If I said it wrong, please correct me when you get to the podium.
My name is Armin Sami, resident of Lawrenceville. Nice to see you all. Speaking on the same thing, the Sure Safe site, the Bloomfield community market, so I know this is something that you're all also disappointed about, and you'll hear from a lot of folks over here about the housing. I wanted to focus on the grocery store underneath as a Lawrenceville resident. So, it's the closest grocery store to where I live. It's the only one I can reasonably walk to. My wife and I have a little push cart, and we look like a little old lady family. We're walking around with our push cart up the hill. We fill our groceries directly into the cart. We don't need to grab another cart from the grocery store, and we can walk it back down the hill. We can't go to Giant Eagle doing that, it's a 45-minute walk. This is only 15 minutes. Now, I don't know about grocery store economics, but the Bloomfield Development Corporation said that this store might not be sustainable if there's not additional housing built nearby. I don't know. If that's true, that's scary. I need this grocery store, it's the only one we can walk to. I can bike to Giant Eagle, but there are days where I really don't want to bike that far. I also want to note that it is part of the affordable housing crisis. When I moved to Pittsburgh, it was 2019, not that long ago, but things were way more affordable. I used to live in the Bay Area, and in the Bay Area, we had billboards hosted by Duolingo that said, "Work and tech, move to Pittsburgh, own a home." And I did, and I can own a home here in Pittsburgh. Let's keep Pittsburgh affordable. It's one of the greatest things about Pittsburgh. When I go to house parties here, I meet all sorts of people, painters, welders. In the Bay Area, it was only people who made a lot of money, because that's the only people who could afford to live there, and so that's a problem, and let's keep Pittsburgh for everybody because it's one of its greatest assets. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Connor Dickey, and I live on Eitan Street in Spring Hill, and I'm also part of Pro-Housing Pittsburgh. I'm here today to urge you to reform our city's zoning code to allow the building of abundant housing to help end the affordability crisis. Housing impacts our city's budget directly as more residents increases the tax base, so that's why we chose to speak today. The Zoning Board of Adjustment's recent denial of variances for multiple projects around the city, like the redevelopment of the Sure Safe site by Echo Realty in Bloomfield, has highlighted the need for our city to reform its zoning code. The types of projects like this shouldn't need approval from the Z B A, they should be allowed by right. This project would have doubled the number of permanently affordable housing units in Bloomfield overnight and added 200 additional units to Bloomfield's housing stock, providing clean and safe housing options for new and existing residents. Instead, rents will continue to increase as the supply of housing remains constrained. Rising housing costs impact everyone. When I moved back to the city after college looking for a place to rent, it took me several months to find an affordable place to live, and even so, some of the most desirable neighborhoods were unaffordable for me. More abundant housing would have given me an opportunity to live closer to friends and the community church that I was a part of. I believe Pittsburgh is a fantastic city, and I want to see it affordable for anyone who wants to live here. We can't thrive if housing is not affordable. Without abundant housing, costs will continue to skyrocket and push our neighbors further and further away from their hometown. To me, this is unacceptable. I call on City Council to change our zoning code, to upzone throughout the city, remove parking minimums, and grow our city for the future. Thank you.
Amy Zais? Amy? Is she online?
Yes.
Okay.
Hello?
Good morning.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes, please state your name and neighborhood for the record, and you may begin right after that.
Wonderful, thank you. My name is Amy Zais, I'm a resident of Beachview. I'm also speaking as a member of Pro-Housing Pittsburgh, the grassroots organization for affordable housing for all, is what we believe in, and I want to speak from my experience as a relatively new resident of Pittsburgh. I've been here about two years, and I previously lived in the Bay Area of California. The single most reason I left California was housing crisis, and to be honest, I was barely treading water there with my rent. I was never able to save money, so I came to Pittsburgh hoping for more affordability, which I found, but, you know, frankly, I make a little less money than I made in the Bay Area, so I- make a little less money than I made in the Bay Area, so I still struggle with affordability. And I think that this is an experience that long-term residents of Pittsburgh experience as well. I'm someone who is a millennial. I would love to own a home. I've never been able to get there. And I just want to implore the council to consider making common-sense zoning changes and reforming the zoning code, which is currently actively blocking new housing from being built. When I say common-sense zoning reform, I mean things like eliminating parking minimums, making it easier to build by right without having to go to the zoning board for variances. And yeah, I guess that's all I want to say today. I just want to thank you for your time. I think this feedback, allowing feedback from the community is very valuable and important. I guess I want to mention also that these meetings always run late, and I consider it a privilege to be able to come here. I work from home, so I'm currently multitasking and skipping between work emails and coming in here. I don't think most people have that opportunity. And I heard names being called earlier that didn't show up. I wouldn't be surprised if those people came and had to leave because of babysitting or other things. So thank you. I really value your hearing me and having this opportunity. Thanks.
Thank you. Now, our next registered speaker is Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller. Dr. Miller?
I'm Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller, Belsuver, also Brussels, Belgium. I'm a member of the Allegheny County Law Library on the ninth floor. I encourage all these citizens to go there, join up. I'm a Global Intelligence Society candidate for President 2024, globalintelligencessociety.org. I've been educated at the University of Pittsburgh, University of Oxford, Cambridge, and in Jerusalem as well. A concern of Pittsburgh City Council in Pittsburgh is clearly local government and the budget. You say to achieve a greater equity and lesser inequality, well, so let's make it more local. Make it local, more equitable, you say. Out with the flat tax and in with a graduated progressive tax, if you're really serious about equity. Make it lajida, more global language congenial. $900,000 a year, $100,000 per district. Pittsburgh street signs to be in English, Espanol, and Jean-Wen, similar to Jerusalem, street signs which are in Hebrew, Arabic, and English. Make it jumoto, more globally educationally competitive by requiring allocating 50% of the city tax assessment for pre-university education to assigning teachers to one-on-one in-person, in-home course instruction. That's millions of dollars, but I think it's worth it for our teachers and our kids. Make it logalizado, more globally scientifically competent by financially restricting all district CLPs that are turning our libraries into pretty but pretty stupid mathematical deserts. $1 million for 2024, make it local. A localized, global, all-the-people vote-assure system by funding elected councils in all neighborhoods to take back local individual control of our vote. Elected councils, not appointed or self-appointed people, but elected by the people who are in the neighborhoods, via vote by voter verification for whom complete access, at least $1 million per district. And make it local by helping our police officers, globalizing our police officer force by doubling the number and doubling the salaries of our police officers and providing them with hazmat suits.
And David Vatz is our next registered speaker. David, is he online? David? Is he on? Is he muted? One last time. He's online, but we can't hear him. Do you think maybe he has an odor? What is it?
Hey, can you hear me now?
Yes, now we can hear you.
Ah, there we go, okay, sorry.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, I guess I was unmuted, but there was some issue with my computer there. I fixed it there.
That's okay. I'm new at this, too. Go ahead. Thank you.
All right, well, yeah, my name is David Vatz. I'm a resident of Squirrel Hill, and members of council, I wanted to speak to you today to urge you to immediately make changes to the exclusionary Pittsburgh zoning code that makes it illegal to build housing across the city of Pittsburgh. Over the last few weeks, we've seen the zoning code block numerous projects that would have been highly beneficial to our city. Zoning-related issues are currently blocking hundreds of homes across our city, including the affordable housing being proposed in Fineview, the mixed-income housing being proposed at the SureSave site in Bloomfield, and the market-rate housing being proposed at the Irish Center. Because of our convoluted zoning code, all of these projects as of now will not be built, meaning hundreds of families who might have otherwise been able to live in our communities will not get that opportunity. The consequences of this are not abstract, but impact actual families. I think about my two friends, both teachers in the city, who want to live in the community but cannot afford to do so because of the housing shortage. This affects me personally because my life is less complete without them around, but it's an even greater negative for families who don't get the benefit of their teachers living in their communities. Over the years, both of them have left the city for the suburbs in search of affordable homes in which they can raise their families. Regularly, both of them have expressed their desire to be back here. They desire the richness of the culture in the city, the diversity of people and opinions, the walkability, all of the things which I have come to love about our city. So how do these block projects fit into all of this? Simply put, there is a shortage of homes of all kinds in Pittsburgh, and that shortage ripples through the housing market and affects people of all backgrounds, from the cashier to the teacher to the lawyer. Our own housing needs assessment indicated that Pittsburgh is expected to grow by nearly 10,000 households in the next decade and over 24,000 households in the next 20 years. If we don't build more housing, costs will rise, and if we do build new housing, it opens up opportunities for our city to grow and flourish. Changes that should be immediately made to our zoning code include permanent greater heights and densities, particularly in our commercial corridors and along transit lines, eliminating burdensome parking minimums, which increase the cost of building housing, allowing multifamily housing by right on any lot citywide, allowing the building of lower-cost housing options like ADUs and SROs citywide, and expediting the approval and offering greater heights and densities for projects that include an affordability component. Common-sense changes like these are critical to our ability to create an affordable and inclusive city. Failure to make these changes will create ever-increasing, an ever-increasing housing crisis, rising costs, and displacing residents. Members of council, I urge you to immediately take up these issues and address the housing situation as the crisis that it is. Eliminate the exclusionary zoning practices that currently make it illegal to build housing and move forward with a plan for a more affordable and inclusive city for the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registered speaker is Lucas Godstock. Lucas, is he online? No, not online, not in person. And I'll just say that we are getting a late start because we did have a mayor's budget address and took a recess in between, so for the public who may just be joining us. Vlad Kaplan?
Good morning, everyone. Lucas was here, by the way. He just ran out of time, had to go.
He is here?
He was here, but he had to run.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Hello, my name is Vlad Kaplan. I live in East Liberty. I'm a member of Pro-Housing Pittsburgh, and I'm here to ask City Council to fix our zoning code so that building abundant housing is easy in Pittsburgh. Like a bunch of the other people, I moved to Pittsburgh last year from the San Francisco Bay Area, where the housing crisis is out of control. I first moved to Berkeley, California, many years ago to go to college. I was very lucky with my timing. I was able to find a small studio apartment near campus and near the city's downtown. I lived in that small studio apartment for 20 years as rents soared around me. After I finished college, I got a job at the public library in downtown Berkeley and was fortunate enough to be able to walk to work. In the last several years before moving to Pittsburgh, my walks to work became more and more notable. I would pass houses, none of which were worth less than $1.5 million, and I would pass increasing numbers of tents, none of which were worth more than $150. That is what an out-of-control housing crisis looks like, million-dollar houses and tent cities. It's a result of decades of bad housing policy and zoning laws that make it difficult to build dense housing. That situation was preventable in California and is preventable in Pittsburgh. We have an opportunity and an obligation to act before our affordability crisis gets completely out of hand. I don't want people to have to leave Pittsburgh like I had to leave the Bay Area. We don't have to reinvent the wheel. We can copy cities and states that have found effective ways to grow their housing stock and stop obstructionist policies. Some examples are, one, getting rid of exclusionary zoning. We know single-family homes are the most expensive to build and to rent, and that single-family zoning forces less affluent people out of highly desirable neighborhoods. Two, allowing for by-right building of ADUs. Three, and this is probably the most critical, making it easy to build legitimately dense housing along our transit corridors. I live in East Liberty, and I see so much potential for dense housing along Penn, Center, Baum, and Highland. There's a beautiful building called the Highland Building across from the East Liberty Presbyterian Church. That building is 13 stories and provides 127 homes to Pittsburghers. It would be illegal to build now because the area is zoned urban neighborhood commercial, which has a four-story limit near the transit. There's a, there's a location, this is a location on a major transit corridor with access to the busway, walking distance from three supermarkets and two pharmacies. A four-story limit doesn't make sense. On top of the zoning requirement, there's some kind of specialty overlay district that was supposed to be temporary but somehow became permanent, which adds another level of bureaucracy to try to build housing in our neighborhoods downtown. Anyone who wants to build housing there will have to go through a years-long process for approval. This is just fuel for a housing crisis. We need to be making it easier to build, not harder. I'm here to ask City Council to immediately begin updating our zoning code so that builders can build homes and Pittsburghers can live in them. Thank you very much.
Our next registered speaker is Morgan Shaw.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Morgan Shaw. I'm from Shadyside. I'm a member of Pro-Housing Pittsburgh, and I'm here today to speak about my concerns about housing affordability in the city of Pittsburgh. I say this earnestly, moving to Pittsburgh changed my life. It was an absolute revelation to me that I was able to experience all the vitality and messiness of my neighborhood and all that it had to offer, and I didn't have to use my car. I learned how Pittsburgh's neighborhoods were incrementally built to give the residents the things they need, whether it's food or entertainment or a dentist appointment. Further, it was more accessible than I had ever experienced in my life. Unfortunately, the housing unit we lived in was old, poorly maintained, and we couldn't justify staying there any longer. We looked for a new place to live, but it was too expensive. I was living in Squirrel Hill at the time. My wife and I are in that point in our life where we're trying to figure out where we want to live and where we want to build our careers and where we can start to contribute to a prosperous and accessible community. Unfortunately, the neighborhood that we loved doesn't let people build the housing that we are looking for, the clean, newer, safer housing. And even if we wanted to buy an old place and fix it up, that has become too unaffordable for us to do, because even that is expensive now, because it's not being supplemented by newer housing units. So what I want to say is that that community that we loved is something that we want to share with more people. I want to live, I don't have to live in Squirrel Hill, but I want to live somewhere in Pittsburgh because I've really loved it here, and I want to, I want our housing code to match up to that. There are people who want to give back to this community, who want to contribute to the world around them, who want to incrementally improve the neighborhood they live in, the street they live on, the housing that they can access. And I think that the zoning code should allow them to do that. We need to free up our zoning code and give our citizens the ability to grow their neighborhoods from the bottom up by right. And I want you to give my family the ability to build our lives here and to build our prosperity. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mark Paddy? Mark Paddy, online? Not in person? Mark Paddy, one last time. Kyle Weich? Please say the name when you come up, I'm sorry.
That was close. My name is Kyle Weich.
You just gave it to me, too.
My name is Kyle Weich. I am part of the Strip District. And this morning, as I was coming in today, I dropped my bagel sandwich on the ground. I was pretty upset. That led to food waste. Unfortunately, typically, many people throw their food waste in the trash. Instead, I'm renewing that and turning it into revenue. My interest today is to create meetings with you all for later down the line, to follow up and learn more about what you are doing in your districts to contribute and decrease food waste. Food waste typically goes to a landfill where it breaks down and releases methane gas. That is wasted carbon, wasted energy, and wasted renewable resources that we can put back into our communities. So I'm here again to meet with you all later on and find out how we can work with you at EcoTone Renewables to turn that food waste into generative revenue, community projects, and build more support around turning this city into a sustainable city by 2030. I know we are focused on decreasing food waste, we are decreasing carbon emissions, and we want to be a city that is the lead, so that when legislative comes, legislation comes to this state and requires us to decrease food waste to a landfill, we are prepared, and we will be one of the leading cities in this state who has the initiatives in place and how we can help other cities across the state build those initiatives as well. So my message is short and sweet. I would like to meet with you all later on. Again, my name is Kyle Weich, and I'm with EcoTone Renewables. Thank you.
Thank you. Elliot Bennett?
Elliot Bennett? Good afternoon, council. I'm actually going to refrain from comment because what Kyle said was pretty much exactly what I was hoping to say. So like you said, I'd be very happy to speak with all of you and make Pittsburgh the green city that it promises to be. Thank you.
Thank you. And our next registered speaker is Jiang Yangzeng. I don't know if I'm saying that correctly. Jiang Yangzeng.
Yes, good morning, or afternoon now. Good morning. Thanks for having me today. My name is Jiang Yangzeng, and I'm a local resident from Squirrel Hill, and I recently became a member of Pro-Housing Pittsburgh. In addition, I'm a licensed realtor of Pennsylvania, and serve on the committee of Urban Land Institute Pittsburgh, so I'm professionally working with housing and urban planning. I'm here to call on the committee to consider updating the zoning code by reducing and eliminating minimal parking requirements for all new developments which are near public transportation hubs. The one-on-one parking requirement is one of the biggest hurdles for developers in Pittsburgh. This requirement is reduced in certain areas such as downtown Oakland and a very small portion of East Liberty. However, this is far from being enough, as we have ignored the fact that the availability of public transportation in other parts of the city actually reduces the need for parking. Recent studies actually show that parking is often oversupplied for transit-oriented development areas, and most parkings only utilize less than 60% at peak times. This is true for Pittsburgh, and I have a personal example. I'm one of the owners for a small apartment building located in East Liberty with the address 620 North Negri, 15206. The building is only 300 foot from the nearest bus station, which is Negri and Black, which Black Street reserves two bus lines, 71A and 87. So what we have found out is that only two out of six off-street parking spaces are being utilized, as most of our tenants who work in Oakland and downtown choose to take the public transportation for work and do not own a car. This building does not fall within the current parking reduction zone, but due to the proximity to the bus line, the one-on-one parking ratio does not make sense for us, and I think will be really unnecessary for any new development in this area. Many other studies have Many other cities have already updated their zoning code to address this issue. For example, in San Antonio, for all new development within a quarter-mile of public transportation receives up to 75% parking reduction. And if your property is within 500 foot of a transit stop, the parking requirement is completely waived. And other cities that have similar coverage visions include Chicago, Salt Lake City, Miami, and Oakland, California. And now it's time for Pittsburgh to act as well. So to conclude, losing the minimum parking requirement for development would make it much easier to create more housing in Pittsburgh, and this is especially important as housing becomes less and less affordable today. That's all I want to say, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. And that exhausts our list of registered speakers. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address City Council? Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address City Council? Seeing none, we'll now move on to our next order of business, which is the presentation of papers. And we'll begin with Councilman Reverend Ricky Burgess, Chair of Human Resources. Thank you, Councilman. And Councilman Coghill, Chair of Public Safety and Wellness.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill Number 2144, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of Public Safety to Enter Into an Agreement or Agreements with the Allegheny County and the Department of Justice Edward Byrne Justice Assistance Grant for the purpose of receiving and spending grant funds in the amount of $85,000 to support the purchase of new holsters.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Gross, Chair of Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number 2145, Resolution Providing for Supplemental Agreement or Agreements with the Pittsburgh Water and Sewer Authority to Reimburse Expenses of PWSA incurred for roadway base and pavement restoration performed by PWSA on behalf of utilities in the city in advance of the Bus Rapid Transit Project not to exceed $696,705.92, an increase of $139,703.68 to the amount previously authorized by Resolution 474
Thank you. And Councilman Kraus, Chair of Public Works and Infrastructure.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Councilman Kraus presents Bill Number 2164, Resolution Authorizing the Taking, Appropriating, and Condemning by the City of Pittsburgh of Certain Easements Necessary for the Completion of Temporary Support Work for Land Stabilization Around Andover Terrace for Public Transportation Purposes Through Imminent Domain and Further Authorizing the Payment of Just Compensation in Necessary and Incidental Acquisition Costs Related thereto at an Amount Not to Exceed
Thank you. And Councilman Lavelle, Chair of Finance and Law. You've got lots of bills. I'm gonna sit down with this one. Sorry, Madam Clerk. You want my cane?
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill 2146, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of a Single Payment in 2023 to Evelyn Mary Miller and her attorneys Wimmer and Tyler Rico LLC at a Cost Not to Exceed $35,000 in Full and Final Settlement of Litigation filed in the Allegheny County Court of Common Pleas. Bill Number 2147, Resolution Authorizing the City of Pittsburgh to Participate in Applicable Cooperative Purchasing Agreements for Goods, Materials, Equipment, Supply, Services, or Construction as Authorized by the Commonwealth Procurement Code and the Pennsylvania Intergovernmental Cooperation Law for the 2024 Fiscal Year. Bill 2148, Resolution Providing for the Letting of Contracts and for the Use of Existing Contracts for the Purchase of Materials, Supplies, and Equipment for City Departments in the Maintenance, Repair, Rental, and/or Leasing, Rehabilitation, Renovation, Inspection, or Servicing of City Buildings and Facilities, and for Any Miscellaneous Services in and for any City Departments in Providing for the Payment of the Costs thereof for the 2024 Fiscal Year. Bill 2149, Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2024 Capital Budget, the Proposed 2024 Community Development Program, and a 2024-2029 Capital Improvement Program. Bill 2150, Resolution Making Appropriations to Pay the Expenses of Conducting the Public Business of the City of Pittsburgh and for Meeting the Debt Charges thereof for the Fiscal Year Beginning January 1, 2024. Bill 2151, Resolution Fixing the Number of Officers and Employees of the City of Pittsburgh for the 2024 Fiscal Year and the Rate of Compensation thereof in Setting Maximum Levels for Designated Positions. Bill 2152, Resolution Authorizing City Council to Approve Intra-Departmental Transfers Throughout the 2024 Fiscal Year. Bill 2153, Resolution Authorizing Appropriations and Salaries of the Stop the Violence Fund for the 2024 Fiscal Year Beginning January 1, 2024. Bill 2154, Resolution Authorizing Appropriations, Salaries, and Capital Expenditures of the Parks Trust Fund for the 2024 Fiscal Year Beginning January 1, 2024. Bill Number 2155, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Office of Management and Budget to Enter Into an Agreement or Agreements with the Urban redevelopment Authority of Pittsburgh for the Administration of Certain 2024 Pago Funding Projects and Programs and Providing for the Payment of the Costs thereof not to Exceed $2,750,000. Bill Number 2156, Ordinance Amending the Pittsburgh Code at Title II, Fiscal, Article VII, Business Related Taxes, Chapter 245, Earned Income Tax, Section 245.03, Declaration and Payment of Tax at Subsection D so as to Fix the Rate of Interest on Delinquent Earned Income Tax for the Year 2024. Bill 2157, Resolution Authorizing All City Departments in Conjunction with the Department of Finance to Enter on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh into a Facilities Usage Agreement or Agreements during the 2024 Calendar Year for the Purpose of Permitting Groups to Rent City-Owned Facilities for Recreational and Community-Focused Activities in Individual Amounts Not to Exceed $10,000. Bill 2158, Resolution Authorizing the Fee Schedule for 2024 pursuant to Chapter 170 of the City Code. Bill 2159, Ordinance Amending the Pittsburgh Code at Title II, Fiscal, Article VII, Business Related Taxes, Chapter 246, Home Rule Tax, Section 246.03, Declaration and Payment of Tax at Subsection D so as to Fix the Rate of Interest on Delinquent Home Rule Tax for the Year 2024. Bill 2160, Ordinance Amending the Pittsburgh Code at Title II, Fiscal, Article IX, Property Taxes, Chapter 263, Rural Property Tax and Exemption, Section 263.02, Payment Options, Discount and Delinquency Penalty so as to Set the Payment, Discount, and Delinquent Dates for the 2024 Fiscal Year. And Bill Number 2161, Ordinance Amending the Pittsburgh Code at Title II, Fiscal, Article IX, Property Taxes, Chapter 263, Rural Property Tax and Exemption by Fixing the Rate of Real Estate Taxation for 2024.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, you want to sit for a second?
I'm okay.
You're fine? Okay. And Councilwoman, or Councilwoman Strasburger, Chair of Recreation, Youth, and Senior Services? Thank you, Councilwoman. And Councilwoman Warwick, Chair of Innovation, Performance, Asset Management, and Technology.
Thank you, Madam President.
Councilwoman Warwick presents Bill Number 2162, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor, the Director of Public Safety, and the Director of Innovation and Performance to Enter Into a Professional Service Agreement or Agreements with E-approval to Provide Film and Event Permitting Application Software at an Overall Cost to the City not to Exceed $250,000 over five years. And Bill Number 2163, Resolution Amending Resolution 650 of 2022, Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Innovation and Performance on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to Enter Into an Agreement or Agreements or Amendments thereto with Change Agents Training for Access to Their Learning Management System and Consultative Assistance to Adapt the City of Pittsburgh Gold Belt Workshop for E-Learning by Increasing the Approved Amount by $36,000 for an Additional One Year with Option to Renew for One More Year, $18,000 per Year, for an amended Total Cost not to Exceed $72,000.
Thank you. And Councilman Wilson, Chair of Land Use and Economic Development. Councilwoman Warwick for Councilman Wilson. No new papers.
No new papers.
No new papers, Madam Clerk.
Oh, no new papers, Madam President.
Thank you. Thank you. And myself, Chair of Hearings. I have two appointments. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Two appointments, one reappointment. Madam Clerk? Yes, please.
Bill, Council President Teresa Kelsmith presents Bill 2165, Resolution Appointing Angela Williams as a Member of the Equal Opportunity Review Commission with a Term to Expire November 1, 2027. And Bill Number 2168, Resolution Appointing Kevin Carroll as a Member of the LGBTQIA+ Commission with a Term to Expire November 2, 2025.
Madam President, I'm in a motion to approve.
To approve?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. No, wait. Okay. That's what makes sure everyone's good with that. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Both appointments are approved. Thank you, Councilman.
Bill 2166, Resolution Reappointing James Stitt as a Member of the Shade Tree Commission with a Term to Expire November 1, 2027. And Bill Number 2167, Resolution Reappointing BJ Lieber as a Member of the Pittsburgh Water and Sewer Authority Board of Directors with a Term to Expire November 1, 2028.
Motion to, uh, reappointment. Read, receive, file, or approve?
Read, receive, and file for both, it says.
Yeah.
Or the reappointment.
It says, that's all it says on my sheet. What, you tell me?
I forget.
It should be approved.
Should be approved?
Yeah.
Motion to approve, please.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
They're approved. And the other one, we need a motion to read, receive, and file. Which one was the reappointment, Madam Clerk?
They, both the reappointments should be approved.
Okay.
They must just be approved.
Okay. It just says something different. Okay. Okay. So both are approved. Then we'll move on to our next order. Oh, sorry. Is there any unfinished business before City Council? Seeing none, we'll now move on to our reports to committee for final action, and we'll start with Councilman Lavelle, Committee on Finance and Law.
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill Number 2139, Report to the Committee on Finance and Law for November 6, 2023 with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill 2055, Resolution Providing for the Encumbrance of Funds in the Amount of $588,514.92 to Secure a Stay During the City's Appeal of a Fraternal Order of Felice Grievance Award. Bill 2103, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 772 of 2016, Effective January 1, 2017, Entitled, "Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2017 Capital Budget and a 2017 Community Development Block Grant Program, Approving the 2017-2022 Capital Improvement Program by Reducing West Ohio Street Bridge by $130,500, Reducing Streetscape and Intersexual Reconstruction by $20,088.09, and Increasing Ramp and Public Sidewalks by $150,588.09." Bill 2111, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 863 of 2018, Effective January 1, 2019, as amended, entitled, "Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2019 Capital Budget and the 2019 Community Development Block Grant Program and the 2019-2024 Capital Improvement Program by Reducing Maun Oakland Connector Four-Mile Run by $531,314, and Increasing Play Area Improvements by $531,314." And Bill Number 2112, Resolution Providing for the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Action Housing, Inc., for Services Relating to the Installation of Streetlights at the Flatstone Forward Mixed-Use Development for a Sum Not to Exceed $23,400 and for the Payment of the Costs thereof.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, we'll now, I'm sorry. Well, now the bills are ready for final action. All in favor of the passage will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Madam Clerk, Councilman Wilson is online. So would you, Clerk, please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero noes.
Thank you. The bills haven't received. The legally required number of votes are finally passed. That moves us to Councilman Bruce Kraus, Committee on Public Works and Infrastructure.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Madam, Madam President?
Yes.
Uh, sorry to interrupt. Um, can I register aye votes on all reigning bills?
Yes. Madam Clerk?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Kraus presents Bill Number 2140, Report to the Committee on Public Works and Infrastructure for November 6, 2023 with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill 2098, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor of the City of Pittsburgh and the Department of Public Works to Apply for a Grant from the Redevelopment Authority of Allegheny County's Gaming Economic Tourism Fund for the Brighton Heights Healthy Active Center renovation in the Amount of $500,000 for this stated purpose. Bill 2099, Resolution Providing for an amended reimbursement agreement or agreements with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for Costs Associated with the Construction Phase of the West Ohio Street Bridge Project, providing for the Payment of the Costs thereof not to exceed $7,764,987, an increase of $61,070.07 from the previous authorization. The resolution serves to authorize only the amended reimbursement agreement or agreements at no cost to the City of Pittsburgh. Future resolutions will authorize the project-specific service agreements. Bill 2100, Resolution Providing for a Contribution Agreement or Agreements between the City of Pittsburgh and Allegheny County for Costs Associated with the Armstrong Tunnel Project, providing for the Payment of the Costs thereof not to exceed $1,013,017.06. And Bill 2101, Resolution Amending Resolution 276 of 2020 in order to authorize an Increase of Payment to the United States Army Corps of Engineers for Certain Remediation Work to Flood Control Devices along Sawmill Run at an Amount Not to Exceed $611,468.79, representing an Increase of $291,468.79, with such Increase to be paid through issuance of a warrant.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills?
Mm-hmm.
Seeing none, the bills are ready for final action. All in favor of the passage will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would, Clerk, please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero noes.
Thank you. The bills haven't received. The legally required number of votes are finally passed, and that moves us to Councilman Reverend Ricky Burgess, Committee on Human Resources. Councilman?
Councilman Burgess presents Bill Number 2141, Report to the Committee on Human Resources for November 6, 2023 with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill 2096, Resolution Providing for the Authorization to Make All Legitimate Expenditures for Payments and Agreements or Agreements with Various Agencies for Job Development and Employment Services Necessary to Implement the 2023 Neighborhood Employment Program and Providing the Periodic Transfer of Funds to be Used in the 2023 Neighborhood Employment Program for Payment of Costs thereof not to Exceed $210,000. Bill 2097, Resolution Providing the Authorization to Make All Legitimate Expenditures for Payments and Agreements or Agreements with Various Agencies to Provide Job Development and Employment Services, Wages, and Fringe Benefits for Supervisor, Staff Workers' Compensation, Unemployment Compensation, Vocational Skills Training, and On-the-Job Training, Outreach, Recruitment Costs, and Administrative Expenditures Necessary to Implement the 2023 Pittsburgh Partnership Employment Program, and Providing the Periodic Transfer of Funds to be Used in the 2023 Pittsburgh Partnership Employment Program, Payment of the Costs thereof not to Exceed $240,000.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are ready for final on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle. Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero noes.
Thank you. The bills haven't received. The legally required number of votes are finally passed. Now it moves on to Councilman Bobby Wilson, Committee on Land Use and Economic Development. Councilwoman Warwick for Councilman Wilson. Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you, Madam President.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill Number 2142, Report to the Committee on Land Use and Economic Development for November 6, 2023 with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill 1666, Resolution at No Cost to the City, Approving a New Institutional Master Plan under the Pittsburgh Code Title IX, Zoning, Article II, Chapter 905, Section 905.03.D. and Article VII, Chapter 922, Section 922.12.G. for Allegheny General Hospital, Entitled, "Hospital Institutional Master Plan," dated March 2023 on Property Zoned, EMI, Educational Medical Institution District, 22nd Ward, First Council District. Bill 2110, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 772 of 2016, Effective January 1, 2017, as amended, entitled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2017 Capital Budget and the 2017 Community Development Block Grant Program, Approving the 2017 through 2022 Capital Improvement Program by Reducing Lynn Williams Highrise by $2,500, and St. Ambrose Manor by $1,299.35, and Increasing Pittsburgh Higher Ground Foundation, Inc. by $3,799.35, and Authorize Subsequent Agreements.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle. Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero noes.
Thank you. The bills haven't received. The legally required number of votes are finally passed. And that moves us on to, is it Councilman Will, uh, Councilwoman Gross? Thank you. Councilwoman, oh, I'm sorry. Councilwoman Warwick, Committee on Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management.
Thank you, Madam President.
I apologize. Oh, there is none from you, Gross. Okay. Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Warwick presents Bill Number 2143, Report to the Committee on Innovation, Performance, Asset Management, and Technology for November 6, 2023 with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill 2104, Resolution Amending Resolution 280 of 2023, which authorizes the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Finance to Enter an Agreement with Opex Corporation for Maintenance Services Related to the Falcon Red Document Scanning workstation by Adding Additional Funding to Cover Maintenance Services at a Cost Not to Exceed $2,365. Bill 2105, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 482 of 2022, which authorizes the City of Pittsburgh to Extend a Professional Service Agreement with STR Grants LLC for Software Services relating to the E-Properties Plus Profiling System by a Term of One Year at an Additional Cost Not to Exceed $54,658.65, and Adding Ten Additional User Licenses. And Bill Number 2106, Resolution Providing for the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of U.S. Ignite in the Amount of $30,000 for Annual Dues for U.S. Ignite Communities Membership Only.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle. Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero noes.
Thank you. The bills haven't received. The legally required number of votes are finally passed. That moves us on to motions and resolutions. I have a few meeting announcements. Tomorrow, Tuesday, November 14, council will hold our standing committee's meeting at 10:00 a.m. Speaker registration will close at 9:00 a.m. Tuesday morning. Also, tomorrow at 1:30 p.m., council will hold the 2024 Budget Overview and Policy Discussion. Is that you and?
That's me and Rhea.
That's our director, Peter McDebitte, and Deputy Director, Rhea Price, who will present that. On Wednesday, November 14, council's budget hearings will begin with the Office of Management and Budget chaired by Councilman Lavelle. And this afternoon, and that afternoon at 1:30 p.m., council will hold a budget hearings. We'll continue with the Department of Innovation and Performance chaired by Councilwoman Warwick, and the Department of Permit License and Inspection chaired by Councilman Wilson. Budget meetings will continue Thursday, November 16 at 10:00 a.m. with the Mayor's Office and Controller's Office chaired by myself. This Friday, November 17, council will hold the virtual briefing for members to discuss Alcasan's Long-Term Clean Water Plan with the first session beginning at 10:00 a.m. and the second session at 11:00 a.m. Is there anything for members? Seeing none, I would like to say, Happy Veterans Day. Thank you to everybody who got us through the parade and all the public safety, public works, and everyone else in between special events, everybody who helped us get that, that off, and to all the people who celebrated Veterans Day throughout the weekend. Thank you to everyone. And can I have a motion to excuse any absent members? Approve them and adjourn the meetings.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The meeting's adjourned. Thank you, everyone.